All right, it's August 12th. Welcome to the meeting of Millville Planning Board. With us tonight is myself, Chris Drew, Justin Allen, Planning Board members. We also have Gabe Trevor, our interim planner, and Jack Hunter, who we'll explain more about in a minute. And we also have Preston Juskovic, am I pronouncing that correctly? With us as well tonight. Gabe, wanna get us started with what we have on the agenda tonight?
Um, yeah, first up, we have two sets of of minutes to approve for the June and July meeting. I sent those to the board earlier this afternoon. And I have the executive session minutes as a separate document. So I made some corrections to the June minutes based on our conversation in July. But if there's any other changes, I can make those real quick, but I just wanna get these approved, so they're squared away.
Thanks. If you've had a minute to take a look at them, I'll hear a motion to the minute.
Just trying to pull them up right now, just to take a quick peek, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the June 28th meeting minutes.
Second?
Uh, I will second that.
All right. All in favor of accepting the minutes from June 28th? Since we'd learned that we need to do roll call, so. Chris?
Chris, aye.
Justin?
Justin Allen, aye.
Aye.
And the July minutes, I'll give people a chance to look at them. Those were the ones I'm more concerned about, or just, I had no one else has taken a look at them yet.
So would we make a motion to accept the minutes and feel them?
Yeah, I believe the way that it's handled is is different, correct, Gabe?
Yeah, I'm gonna pass, I'm gonna talk to Diane about this next week when I, when I bring them into file with her. I bet she, I bet she has a system for, cause you know, so Select Board does executive sessions all the time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I heard her give an expla, or I heard that there was an explanation at a Select Board meeting recently. I'm just not recalling what her process was, so connecting with her on that would be perfect.
Yeah, she was on vac, I would have asked her yesterday when I was in the office, but she's uh, she's out on vacation.
Um, so is there a motion to approve the board minutes and the executive session minutes from July 20th?
Do we have to take them separately, or?
I think we could have done all of them together, or yeah, Jack's nodding. Is that a yes, we can do them separately, or no, we?
Yeah, yeah. Unless somebody doesn't want them.
Yeah. Okay, so does anyone wanna motion to accept the July minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to uh, make a motion to accept both July meeting minutes.
I will second the motion.
All right, roll call, Chris?
Aye.
All in favor? Justin?
Aye.
Aye. Right, meeting minutes done?
Okay, so um, the first thing on the agenda, do we, so Preston is here for two different reasons. I think we should probably talk to him first, just because he's the, the rest is all kind of busy work. So do, so Preston is here for two reasons. First, he's considering an application for a conversion of a double into a triple, and he's also, again, interested in joining the Planning Board. Like, I think we have to discuss it, but either as a full or interim member, I forget which was, which was applicable. Just because of the circumstances of when terms are and such. So which do we wanna talk about first?
Let's talk about membership first, because I think that'll probably be the quicker conversations.
Okay.
So, just to remind everybody, Preston came before the board, interested in seeing how he could join the board back earlier. I think it was in the winter. At the time, we had a full board, and we spoke with him about becoming our interim member. The board voted, and we sent that along to the selectmen who then appointed Preston to be our interim planner. I'm not interim planner, associate planning board member. And then I'm not quite sure what happened after that. I know I looked at my
I definitely missed a few meetings.
What's that?
I definitely missed a few meetings. I basically what happened is I, I didn't, I didn't get like one invite, and then I meant to reach out and say like, hey, I didn't get the invite for the Lincoln. I could have probably looked on the town's website, it just, I was so busy with this house that it just kinda fell apart.
Yeah, because we had reached out to the town clerk, and at one point, I think you, it had gone a month or two, and you hadn't gotten sworn in. And I'm, maybe that was on us for not explaining the process.
Yeah, I did end up going down there, and I guess, I did, they did swarm, do sworn in, but then what happened is I was supposed to bring the packet back, and then just, I don't know what happened. But uh, yeah, I gotta follow through on that.
Yeah.
But basically, the appointing ran out anyways, I think, being when me and Gabe were talking.
Yeah, the appointment that, the original appointment that we had arranged was through the end of June of this year. In the meantime, because of the way things worked out with the election, and no folks pulled any papers, we're actually, we only have four members right now, so we have an, we have our associate planner position available, and we have, we have a full seat available as well. So I don't know if you wanna take a moment to remind us of why it is that you wanna get involved with the Planning Board? And if you have a preference as to what type of role you're looking to have with us?
Um, I'm just, I'm an electrician, so I'm always around like construction, and for me to be a part of a planning board, I could learn a lot. And whether it be for work that I'm gonna do in town or out of town with construction, it's just, and you gain a lot of knowledge and learn the ins and outs, and it's just, I've always been interested in that, so even if it's not in this town, you know, and I, now that I live here, I'd like to see the town do better in whatever areas I can help in, and I have a lot of areas that I have knowledge in, and I'd like to see the town improve, whether it be construction downtown or anywhere else in the town, like, I'm just interested in anything with construction, really.
Thanks, Preston.
I know that's not the only thing.
What's that, Preston?
Um, I just was saying that, I know that's not all that the Planning Board does, but I'm interested in the construction side, and then the rest, I would obviously be willing to learn what else you guys do.
Thank you. Chris, Justin, Jack, Gabe, does anybody have any questions for Preston?
Can I make a comment for the other two?
Welcome to the board.
For the other two board members and Preston, there's two vacancies, the way I understand it. There's a permanent member vacancy, and there's also the associate member vacancy. What, both have to go to the Board of Selectmen, and once they approve it, you're in. If it's an associate member, you're in until you resign. There's no term limits, you're just there, but he could only act on special permits. He couldn't act on site plan review, or minutes, or other things, any general business, or subdivisions for that matter. So that's good news and bad news. If it's a permanent one, then you can act on everything, but the next election, you would have, you would be up for reelection. And then you enter the cycle, everybody else is in.
Good point. The Planning Board in our town is an elected position, it's a generally a five-year term, although actually, yeah, it is a five-year term because it's an unfilled seat right now.
But from what Pam and Gabe has told me, you need someone pretty badly.
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere, I have a project of a lifetime over here.
You do have a project.
Yep, not even close to done. So, I guess you never finish, though.
Preston, would you be interested in the, being appointed to the permanent position where you could finish out this term as appointed? But then you would have to pull papers in the, in the spring?
Yeah, that would, that'd be perfect for me. Whatever you guys really suggest, I'm open to.
Right? Does anyone wanna make a motion to make the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to appoint Preston as the permanent member for this current term?
I'll make the motion.
I will second the motion.
All right, all in favor? Chris?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, that's easy, that's done with. Yay, thank you, Preston, I appreciate your willingness to step up and appoint our board.
No problem, just let me know.
We do, we thank you.
Yeah, so again, the process will be, we're gonna make the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and they still need to appoint you. They'll get a letter once you're appointed, and they'll let us know as well, and we can reach out by email, and then you'll need to get sworn in and see the town clerk again.
Okay.
We generally meet on the second and fourth Monday of every month. Things have been a little bit wonky with summer vacations, but that's, that's our general rule of thumb. And we are currently meeting via Zoom around 6:30.
Okay.
Right, okay, second part of your question, or the second reason why you're here, Gabe, wanna go over that one more time, and then I know we have some feedback from Lincoln on the topic?
Yeah, so Preston sent me an email a couple, a week or two ago at this point. He, so he owns the property at 132 Main Street, which is in central business district zoning, or I believe that's the correct name. And so he's interested, it's, it's currently a double, and he's interested in converting it to a triple. And so that's currently allowed by special permit in the zone. There are some regulations for converting single-family homes into doubles, but that obviously wouldn't apply in this case. And you know, in conversations with a couple people, it does, the triple would seem to suit the the, the housing style of the district, so it's a lot, I believe it would be allowed. The, yeah, so um, the, the feedback I got from Lincoln, let me pull it up. Yeah, so, so Lincoln's concern, or his, his recommendation is that we accept it, but there, there need to be restrictions for the change, because I guess when it's turned into a three-unit, there are specific building code classifications that have to be followed, requiring sprinklers, and, and he said other egress issues, and I think he, I don't think he had the time today to go into more detail, but he was interested in talking about it in more detail next week.
Sorry, go ahead, Preston.
I was just gonna say, as far as the egress goes, right now it only has one, one exit, so basically, there's a stairwell at the front of the building and a stairwell at the back of the building. What I would do is I would I would basically connect the front staircase to the third floor, which is currently not connected. It would involve, obviously, more than that, but basically, I would, the upstairs of that building is um, it's already been, I don't know when, it was obviously a millhouse or something at one point, so it has upstairs right now, six rooms. So basically, I would rearrange the rooms, and I would add a second egress in the front of the building. It has one only in the back right now. So, yeah, and I already talked to Lincoln, I know that I need to do the fire, the fire alarm system, and I know that I need to do the sprinklers. So basically, what I would like to do is I would like to get approvals for it to be a three-family, but the, the third unit would take me some time to do. So what I would do is I would finish the first and second floor, if it was allowed, and then rent it out as it is, and then I would be working slowly on getting the third family done, the third unit done. Basically, right now, I'm at the point where I need to have the plumbing done. So it would be the perfect time for me to get the approval for the three-family, and then I could get the plumbing up to the third floor at the same time.
Are you planning on doing any dorms or anything like that, or are you just gonna work within the, within the footprint?
It's already full height. It's basically full height already. It's probably like five and a half to six feet at the lowest points, and then it slants up with the roof. So I think it was used at the third floor, it just never had like heat or a kitchen. I feel like it was a shared space. I don't, I don't know what they did back when they had the mills, but you can tell it was definitely used as bedrooms. And I believe that the building next to the left side, I believe it's being used as a three-unit. I'm not 100% on it, but I just based off the amount of cars that's there, I think it is.
And you, you put in an application, or you're here just to kind of run this by us and see what we're thinking?
No, I just basically wanted to run it by everyone and see. I didn't wanna waste my time if it wasn't something I'd be able to do, but if I'm allowed to do it, I'll basically take on the, the permits or the application to turn it to a three-family, and then just make the steps kinda slowly, because it's a huge cost to do, but yeah, I just want some advice basically, and make sure I start on the right foot.
Jack, do you have any advice on this?
Pardon me?
Any thoughts?
Any thoughts on this one?
I have a question for Gabe. Or Preston, currently, you're a single family?
It's a two-family.
Oh, it's a two-family.
Yeah, so it's, it's, so Preston, correct me if I'm wrong, but my impression is it's two units, and then an attic, basically.
Full walk-up, third floor with bedrooms.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, besides all the building stuff, and I haven't read the bylaw, you, you are gonna run in, I'm glad Preston's gonna be a member. He will have to recuse himself, and you need four members. So we had this discussion yesterday, and hopefully your fourth member can sit in and give him his due, because he deserves to be heard, right?
Yep.
So, that's all. I, I haven't read the bylaws, so I don't, I just don't know.
Yeah.
All right, perfect. So Preston, and if you're not familiar with it, Gabe can give you the information on applying for the special permit.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Yeah, and um, yeah, I like, like we discussed, when we talked last week, I would just recommend being ready to sort of have like floor plans and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I'll definitely pay the company to do some floor plans, and then basically, I'm gonna have an engineer come look at it before I do anything. Basically, I'll do like an as, an as-built for the floor, and then I'll come up with, you know, a drawing of what I anticipate doing, and I can submit that with my plans.
Perfect.
Pam, or Gabe, or someone, is Millville on public water or public sewer?
No.
So
No.
I'm gonna have to make sure the Board of Health is okay with the Title V on your septic system?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to upgrade the septic system for sure when I go to two to a three-family.
And I don't know, every planning board I ever worked for always was concerned about parking, so.
Yeah, so I can give you guys some input on that. The way the lot is right now, it's two smaller commercial lots, one in front of the other. So basically, what I would do in the back part of the, on the second lot, it's a hill, so I'd obviously have to pull a permit, because the wall is gonna be over four feet, but I basically would dig into the back part of the wall and use, you know, those bin blocks they sell? The concrete bin block walls, I'd end up installing one of those, and I would get it so that it had enough parking for at least six cars, two per floor. And then I would obviously do a six-bedroom septic when I go to do it.
And so I would suggest, unless Gabe tells me differently, when you submit, you give a site plan that shows what you wanna do.
Okay.
On the site.
Yeah, I would include that with your engineering.
Okay, yeah, I'll have him give some sort of drawing showing the current parking situation versus what I wanna do.
Perfect.
And I hope you get along with your neighbors.
I actually already talked to the neighbor next door, and he's the one who basically admitted to me, he's like, kinda using it as a three-family, and he's, he's actually a really nice guy, so I got along really good with him, and he does, he seemed like he doesn't mind that it would be a three-family.
Again, six, it, um, six spots would, uh, there's, it's a two, two-spot-per-unit requirement in Millville. Pretty, pretty simple parking code.
I'd squeeze that room with the double lots there.
Okay.
It already basically three cars, so if I did what I'm talking about, I'd be able to easily get, I could probably get even seven or eight, realistically.
I personally, given the location and everything, and the style of the house, I mean, I think honestly, it'd be a good up, upgrade for the, for the neighborhood itself. You know, simply just, you know, the sprinkler system and all of that stuff, you know, it would obviously be a safer building, so, you know, whether it stays a two or goes to a three, I mean, really. Personally, I think, you know, it would be a better tax rate, you know, having this frequent system in there, the fire alarm, all that other stuff, I think that's more of an asset, you know, to the renters and everybody else in the building.
Yeah, 100%.
That's just my personal, you know, unbiased opinion.
Thanks, Chris. Any other questions for us, Preston?
Um, I actually did have a question. I talked to Gabe about the, the sign bylaws for the town, so basically, I'm at 5 Central Street, so it's in the business district, and I just was looking at the sign rules and, because I wanna basically pull a permit. I have my own electrical business, so what I was looking to do was put a sign for my electrical business, not lit up, just basically a vinyl sign right now, and then maybe in the future, I don't know if I'll light one up, but I just wanted to get you guys' input on it. What me and Gabe put together out of the, the bylaws was that they kinda need to be a little reworked, but what we got out of it was that it looks like I could do like a 10 by 6, so 60 square foot.
Yeah, the, for, just looking at the zoning, or the bylaws, yeah, so you could have, basically, it depends on where you put the sign, so this would be a freestanding sign, or you said it might be on a fence?
It would be, so basically, what I would do now is I would use it as a freestanding, and it would be on Central Street.
Okay.
Um, what I would do is I'd do it like that, and then after I get my fence installed, what I would probably do is permanently install a sign on the fence.
Okay, so the rules for freestanding and pole sign are the same? Or, yeah, it's, it's 60 square feet, and it can't be in the side or rear yard.
Yeah, so basically, it only can go in the front?
Yeah. But yeah, so I think basically, if you're within 60 square feet, you're good.
Just another general question, would you only, so basically, if I have a friend that also owns a business, am I allowed to put a sign for their business in my yard too, because it's a main road, or is it only a business that is being used at the location?
No, yeah, it says permitted signs for commercial automotive sales and service and industrial, you should, so I'll be related to the use on the lot on which the sign is located.
Okay.
Yeah.
10 by 6 seems really large for that space. Is that typical?
Um, I think the 60 square feet is typical. If you look across the street, the, the town's sign, their sign's not 10 feet by 6, but theirs is probably at least, I would guess, maybe, maybe 6 by 4, but they did that because there's, it's electronic and like lit up. I don't know if that was just the size available, but I don't know if I would go with 10 by 6, or like me and Gabe were talking about, I might do it differently, maybe 8 by 8, or whatever, you know, is close to the 60 square feet. I'm not positive, but whatever you guys, I mean, whatever we decide based off of the, the bylaws, like I'm okay with, you know?
Yeah, if you, um, so, sorry, if and when you bring that to the board, I would recommend bringing a photo of sort of the prop, like where you wanna put the sign in the context. And obviously, when you do the application, we'll, you know, have the address and everything, but I think that'd be, if you wanna include some supporting materials.
Yeah, I'll basically get a proof from the company that I'm gonna have do it, and then I'll just draw up a, basically, a sketch that shows like my yard and the, the location that it would be in. And so with the sign, do I have to do that before the Planning Board, or is that something I just bring an application to, like, to Lincoln? Because I thought, is that how it works, or no?
Pull it up. I believe you need to get a permit from us.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so I just get a permit with Lincoln, and then I can have a copy of the actual proof of what I plan to do for him?
I believe so, it doesn't the by, let me check. Yeah, with, you need a signed permit from the building inspector. For signs in excess of what is permitted, the Planning Board may grant a special permit. So if it's within, if it's, if it's within the parameters and the bylaws, you just need to pull a permit from from Lincoln.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go over the size, the signage.
Yeah.
It's allowed, I'm not gonna go for
Yeah.
a special permit, so I'll just do that when I, when the time comes for Lincoln.
Right. Do you have any other questions, Preston?
Uh, no, that was the only questions that I had tonight.
All right, thank you. You're welcome to hang out.
I'll stay on.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Um, let me pull up the agenda. Okay, so let's just circle back to the beginning, approval of minutes, shared planner update. I really don't think there's too much to say, we're kind of in the same situation we were at the last meeting. I met with Jack and Pam, and Jack is, I assume you're trying to meet with the town administrator when you can?
Yeah, I'll wait till I'm under contract.
Okay.
I talked to you, go ahead.
Yeah, so there's not, I don't, I would say there's not really a big update. For the most part, I'm starting to to give Jack materials, and we, I showed him around the office yesterday, and you know, I'll be available to him to help bring him on board.
Yeah, I talked to Kim, the town administrator amended today, I am yesterday, she actually had pneumonia.
Oh geez.
On the mend and back in business, and I am on their next agenda for the Board of Selectmen for the contract to be signed. And, you know, I'm starting to to look at your bylaws and try to help as much as I can. And as far as hiring a full-time person, a permanent person, as soon as I'm under contract, I'm gonna advertise and bring the committee, the three-town committee, some candidates. The good news is that, I don't know if I mentioned this to Pam, but the town of Hudson where I used to work, they moved everybody up after I left, and they're filling the bottom position. And actually, I talked to them today, and they are going to appoint someone today. And once they've accepted the position, she's gonna send me some of the resumes of whoever applied, and she thought there were some good competent people, so we'll see. I'm off and running a little bit. Once I'm under contract, you'll probably see me more. Well, you're gonna see me anyway. As long as you're virtual. When you get to be live, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Thanks, Jack.
Hey. Um, let's pull that up again. And then membership and reorganization, I do think there's some, are there a couple, do we need to reelect a chair? There's a couple sort of formal things we have to do, correct?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't done that, because we haven't had a full board.
Okay, so we still wanna wait on that?
I think it, I would feel best if we could get Bill on the call when we reorganize, and at this point, maybe we're bringing on Preston, maybe it makes sense to I think it just, I would feel best if we could get Bill um, on the call when we reorganize and at this point, maybe we're bringing on Preston, maybe it makes sense to wait till then.
Okay.
Is, is Bill still part of the group or is he doing a resignation?
He mentioned he was gonna give his resignation, but he hasn't yet.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that, that maybe he's reconsidering some or. He's, it's still active, uh, he's still a member of our board right now, though.
Perfect.
Yep.
Um. The other thing, um, I only have two more things to discuss, um. We uh, the planning board needs to determine a uh. A delegate and alternate to CMR PC for fiscal year twenty-two.
So, just to go back to that, the, the selectmen has a, they have appointed me as the alternate.
Okay.
And, and Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe I'm just getting my years confused at this point, but did we already have a vote in, in you were our CMR PC delegate?
Yeah, and uh, I, I'm all, I'm all set with that now.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll just send Janet the paperwork.
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll, I'll just submit the paperwork if everything's. They might have just, I mean, they prob, they could have sent it preemptively or.
Gotcha.
Um, but I'll just, I'll just send it along, um, and then finally, um, just for the board, we have no uh, other pending applications. Um, no real correspondence that needed to be brought to the board's attention. Um, the only thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention is next Tuesday. Um, the zoning board of appeals is meeting to consider a variance um, for Susan Gray at fifty-four Kilney Woods. Um. And one fifty-six Rear Chestnut Hill Road, um, they want relief from frontage requirements for construction of a single-family home. Um, at those. Uh. Addresses, so if. I, I don't plan on attending the meeting, but um, if, if a planning board member wants to be in attendance or if you think we should uh. Like, yeah, if you think anything needs to be done about that, I don't know what the protocol is in the relationship with the ZDA, but.
Gotcha. Thanks for bringing that up. Um, the other item on the list too was the um. Building inspector search.
Oh yeah.
That we brought up um, last week. Um, that committee needed to get up and running, um, so. They appointed me to be on that committee, so I will do that, um, they need to have a planning board member present. Um, so I'll do that. Unless anybody really wanted to switch off, but. I figured this was okay for now. Um. I think that's it, wouldn't have any other items unless anyone on the board has any other outstanding items or questions, I think we do need to just confirm our meeting date, the next one.
It would be the twenty-third, I believe, right? Monday, the twenty-third?
Should be the Monday, the twenty-third, yes, does that still work?
That works for me.
Perfect. Justin, if you're safe, is that still good for you?
Yeah, Monday, the twenty-third is fine.
Okay. Alright, if there's no other items, I'll hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at seven oh four.
I will second that.
Right, all in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And I say aye. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you too.
Okay, you too, good night, everybody.
Night.